Alright, good evening everyone. Before we get started, council would like to wish Executive Assistant Kayla Parsons a very happy birthday. Happy birthday Kayla.
Happy birthday.
And with that, I hereby call this committee the whole meeting for March twenty-third to order. Can I get a motion that the the agenda for the March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one committee, the whole meeting be adopted as presented? Counselor Shannard makes that motion. Any concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Passed. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the March ninth, twenty twenty-one committee, the whole meeting be adopted as presented? Counselor Wilkinson makes that motion. Any comments or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Passed. Next up, we have a delegation from the Arts Centre for Edson Society, ACES. I believe We have Peter Taylor on the line. Good evening, Chief Peter.
Hello, members of council.
And please proceed.
Okay, well, good evening, your worship, as many you know, my name is Peter Taylor, and I'm the president of the Arts Centre for Edson Society. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to give a brief overview of our organization, present our newest initiative, which is called ACES Kids in the Arts Program, and provide an overview of our concept, describe the benefits of the Kids in the Arts Program, request seed funding for the Kids in the Arts Program, and hear questions from council regarding the Kids in the Arts Program, as well as wish Kayla a happy birthday as well, so, from ACES. So, moving on. Our mandate, ACES mandate, is to develop a new performing arts facility in the town of Edson and to advocate for the arts and culture community in the Edson and surrounding area. We've been working on this initiative since two thousand and seven. ACES has developed many different concepts of what a new facility in Edson would look like, and all of these plans are available on our website at artcentreforedson.ca. So, the Kids in the Arts Program. Over the past several months, ACES executive members have been working on a new plan entitled Kids in the Arts. ACES understands that children should be able to experience arts and culture activities as they strive to enrich and expand their artistic minds. ACES also understands that there can be many monetary restrictions that prevent families from registering their children in arts activities. ACES Kids in the Arts Program's purpose is to foster an early involvement and continuation in the arts by providing bursaries to children from families facing financial barriers. By doing so, children can participate in registered arts and culture activities in the Edson area so they can experience the lifelong benefits of being exposed to the arts. ACES Kids in the Arts Program will provide these bursaries to children by subsidizing up to fifty percent of the cost to participate in arts and culture programs in the Edson area. These funds may include, but are not limited to, registration fees, materials such as costumes and canvases and art supplies, accommodations and competition fees. And a list of programs this children may register in, in the Edson area to be used for this bursary can be found in your council package. Children who are eligible must have reduced financial means, live in and around the Edson area, and be eighteen years or younger. Preference will be given to those children enrolling in programs in and around the town of Edson within schooling distance to Edson. Families will be asked to prove their financial need by providing a letter from a sponsor who will vouch for their need. ACES also encourages individuals who know of others in need of financial help to help nominate them for this bursary. ACES would like to begin this program in the fall with an application deadline of September fifteenth. From there, ACES will have two more application deadlines throughout the school year of January fifteenth and April fifteenth. So, the benefits of the program. ACES is starting this program as we understand the importance of enriching the lives of youth with arts and culture. We believe these programs can help make children more well-rounded citizens and can often lead to future career endeavors. Without this program, many children may not have the opportunity to develop some special skills that will help them throughout their life. In addition, this past year has been particularly difficult for extracurricular programs. Many programs have seen reductions in class sizes and enrollment due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. With this, these organizations have seen less funding to sustain their programs, not to mention many families have lost jobs and income, making it harder for them to afford extracurricular programs for their children. And finally, the mental health of our youth is of utmost importance. The cancellation of programs and activities for youth over the last year has taken a tremendous toll on the mental health of our ACES hopes, providing this bursary, more children will be able to afford to take part in the arts and culture programs, while at the same time increase the mental health of our youth and that local organizations see a higher and more engaged enrollment. Funding. Our goal, if we're hoping to fundraise, is approximately ten thousand dollars to begin this program. We will be looking to the local business community to help sponsor this program, and these businesses will be thanked on our website and their names we proudly displayed along with all of our promotional materials. Our request to you. At this time, ACES is looking to Edson Town Council for two reasons. One, to gain your support for this concept. And two, to look for a financial request of five thousand dollars as seed money to start this program. This will be a one-time donation to help subsidize this program so we can begin accepting applications for our September fifteenth deadline. As many you know, once public dollars have been committed to a project, private donations are likely to follow. We believe that addition to the previously mentioned benefits, that this program can fall perfectly within the town's plan to help recover from the COVID nineteen pandemic. In closing, ACES believes this initiative will be a value program in our community. We believe many families will be able to afford to have their children be involved in different arts and culture organizations so that they can develop artistic skills that will no doubt benefit them throughout their lives. I'd like to thank you for listening to our presentation, and at this time, I look forward to hearing your questions regarding for members of council regarding the ACES Kids in the Arts Program.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Do we have any questions? Counselor Byer.
Thanks through the chair to Mr. Taylor. Thank you for the presentation. This kind of reminds me of the Kids in the Sports Program, but just leaning towards the arts, which is my understanding at times was heavily utilized and other times not so much. So, my question is to you regarding the reduced financial means and applications. Something that is my understanding the Kids in Sport had struggle with was getting the families that actually could utilize the benefit to apply, apply for it and accept that, you know, sometimes it's a little tricky in a small town if you are one of those families that does have reduced financial means to actually admit that and get the help that the community is offering to you. So, do you have any ideas around that?
Well, one of our members is also the, is Deanna Insko, who's also the arts coordinator for the town of Edson, and she's been making great headway in terms of connecting and networking with the different organizations in town. And typically, like, one of the things we talked about was the sponsor letter. Typically, that sponsor was probably going to be someone connected to the arts organization. That's what something you'd find in the past. And again, we encourage those individuals, if they know of people that are in financial need, they can nominate them. And we can begin that process. And again, we would keep, there's an anonymity that would be applied to the process as well, that no one needs to know that these families have applied and they hopefully see the benefit of that. So, that's our goal to do it that way.
Alright, any, Counselor Sharn.
Hi, thanks, Mr. Taylor, for your presentation. Your funding request, again, are you looking for for this year or next year? Because, I mean, with our budget already passed. And remind me what the total you were looking for again?
The the amount we're looking for from council is five thousand dollars. For this year, we understand the budget is is already finalized. We also understand adjustments can be made to the budget if necessary, so it would be to start for September fifteenth. So, and again, it's a one-time donation of seed money so we can begin the process in the hopes that we can, you know, begin the process of recovering from of COVID nineteen in the fall.
Okay, yeah, because that was my question. I mean, I fully agree, the five thousand is a great deal of money. I do like the cause, because anytime you're involving children, I mean, it's something good because there are stepping stones for adulthood. So, I look forward to seeing if we can come up with the funding.
Alright, Counselor Wilkinson.
Through the chair. And this is more to council really than to you, Peter, but thank you for your presentation. I thoroughly agree that we need to help kids out. I just wondered, did we give seed money to kids in sports? Because they're almost parallel organizations, and I guess, just to be fair, we'd have to make sure that we've sponsored both equally. But I do appreciate this, and I think you're very lucky to have Deanna Insko in there. She seems to be doing many art crafts through our town, actually, the Trash to Treasure and stuff. I think she's doing an excellent idea, ideas already. But thanks for your presentation. It was very nice.
Don't know if anybody can comment on that? Mr. Taylor, do you have a comment?
I can't comment whether you've sponsored the other program in the past, but that being said, I, you know, we're here, the other organization is not here. In terms of balancing out to both organizations, that's not necessary. Council can make choices as to which organizations they sponsor or choose. You have done so in the past, and I can say that we are here now asking for for seed money. Can't comment about anybody else at this time, so we're looking at this request right now. And that's something we've talked about for our level about what you, as council, might ask, and that's our response to that comment. So, thank you.
Fair enough. Anyone else? Counselor Curry and then Mayor Zahara.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for your presentation. I think it's a great idea, and thank you to the volunteers and to the organizers who have taken this on. Definitely, I know Kids in Sport is one that is also a, at a more national level, so there's a lot of organizing, organization behind that that comes from a national level. So, this is very much local, and I appreciate that. To council, I would say that I would be in support of this, and I would suggest that either two different funding options we would look at is, do we look at it out of the COVID relief, but more importantly, do I think any of our grant options that we do out of community development is where it would seem natural. I just don't know what the budget is there. But to me, this is no different than a lot of the grants that we give out to other organizations in the community, and being that it is a one-time situation, it feels like that grant, but maybe I would put that to Ms. Bitner on where she thought it would make the most sense if we were to do it. But just knowing that I feel like it is in the community development department, and that we do normally do grant likes like this, such as the Boys and Girls Club. We did the youth after-school youth program and such too in the past, so I do think this is in line with a lot of the grants we've done in the past.
CEO Bitner, do you have a comment?
Through the chair to to council, I think to Counselor Curry, yes, you're correct there. I think we could, we could look into the different possible funding ideas for this and bring that back when we finalize the budget in a few weeks' time, if that's what council would wish.
Alright, Mayor Zahara.
Thank you for the presentation, Peter, and I think that we've seen that with COVID, certainly less opportunities for for kids and adults alike, as well as there's been some financial hardships. So, I'm certainly supportive of looking at this when we finalize our budget here in the next month or so. I guess my question to you, Mr. Taylor, is what would happen with funds that aren't used? So, say if there isn't much uptake on this. What what would happen with those funds? Would they be given back to the town of Edson? And what kind of reporting back would you have to the town of Edson? As we do with any other grant, we require organizations to report back on how that money is used.
So, to your first question, what we do with funds that aren't used? Essentially, they, since it's seed money, it would carry over to the next year. Are we looking at, you know, doling out five thousand dollars in September? We don't know, depending on how many applications we have and the funding we're looking at. I would say this could last us a little bit of time, certainly throughout the next year and the following years. If your question is, okay, long-term, okay, so we can't dole out five thousand dollars over long-term? Yes, then obviously it has to go back to the town of Edson in that time. We're hoping that it will take off, like, you know, like, say, hopefully, but also hopefully that we don't see that many families need it, but we know that there are families that need it. And your second question was?
Second question is, how would you report back to the town of Edson? Propose a report pack to ensure that the funds are being used as we do with any other organization?
We would coordinate with your administration as to what kind of reporting period they would like to see. We can do that as a yearly thing or bi-yearly thing or by application deadline, and we could say how much percentage we've used and how many families have have come forward to use it or been nominated or sponsored to use it. The reporting can be done however this council and administration see it best. We would certainly, again, through our secretary treasurer, keep a very close eye on how the funds are used to make sure they're used appropriately, and certainly reporting back on how the five thousand dollars from the town is used. So, that's all I can say for right now in terms of, but we would certainly want to report back and tell you how they're being used, so.
Great, Counselor Bevan.
Through the chair to Peter Taylor. Thanks for the presentation. You know, I like, I like what you brought to us and that. It is a good support. The kids, you know, do need a choice because not everybody is into sports or whatever and that. So, I think the more we can put in there for our younger generation to be able to use and maybe something like this in their future, maybe they get into some other roles or whatever would help them and that. I like what Counselor Curry had said too about maybe the COVID or whatever and that, that we look at it. And, you know, we can make adjustments to our budget and that and stuff, so I think, you know, I believe this is something we should look at. I mean, I'm always in support of the kids and everything else and that, or anybody like that. So, I think, you know, we sit down, we talk about this as a council, and one of my questions, what the mayor said, both reporting back to us. To me, that's very important, that important that we get reports back on how everything is spent and what's going on and that. So, but I do like you brought to us, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks through the chair to council. I'm also in support of of this. I think this five thousand seed funding is a small amount when we consider the things that are at stake. On the youth council, the youth council is constantly mentioned when we ask regarding their mental health. How are your peers? And they continue to say that mental health is a struggle. And like Counselor Bevan said, not everybody's into sports, everybody's got their niche, they've got their hobbies and their outlets. They have, they all have their own unique outlets, and the arts is a very broad one, and I think that it certainly deserves the attention as well. So, I'm in support of either looking at this as a part of our current budget or taking it from our COVID reserve, if that was the choice of council.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, I will, oh, Mayor Zahara.
Just through to CEO Bitner, and I hate to put you on the spot, do you know if we gave money to kids in sport, if you can recall that or not? Or at least provide that information to us when we discuss this at budget time.
Through the chair to the mayor. I don't have that information handy, but I can definitely bring that to you when we discuss this.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I will go last. I am in full support of this project. I think it's a fantastic idea. We council struggles to, with previous discussions on how to focus our COVID fund and focus it on the most needy, and this is an excellent way to do that directly. So, I knew it's a very modest request, in my opinion, so I think if we don't have grant money available right now, I'd be willing to support using the COVID fund. So, thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Taylor, and you're free to stick around and watch the rest of the show.
Oh, man, I just got so much Netflix to go check out right now, but have fun, everybody, and thank you so much. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next up, we have reports from staff, executive office, staff compensation policy. And Mr. McComb, please proceed.
Good evening, council. In August of last year, the administration approached the committee of the hall on the subject of salaried staff compensation. Council at the time indicated its preference for a philosophy of compensation that targets the fiftieth percentile in terms of base wages and seeks to find other more creative, more cost-efficient ways to increase our overall competitiveness. In October, council helped administration move forward with a vacation pilot that's fulfilled the second part of that mandate. Tonight, we're asking you to review the attached drafted policy before we bring it to you for approval. I want to be clear that the approval of this policy does not bind council to any budgetary commitments. On the contrary, the way we've structured it clearly and definitively subordinate staff wages and grids to budgetary considerations. When we talk about the fiftieth percentile, we are only talking about a target. Our ability to reach that target will always be subject to the budget, which is in turn subordinate to the will of council. I invite your feedback and your questions.
Right, Counselor Wilkinson.
Just on the bottom of my page fifteen, and I know this is discussing out-of-scope staff, but it says cycles on market reviews and cost of living adjustments are aligned with those of the council remuneration policy for organizational consistency and practicality. But this is, is it also aligned with our QP employees that they also get this cost of living?
Thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson. Is, as far as I'm aware, we don't currently have a target for for QP employees. I wouldn't be opposed to discussing that. I'm not sure how that would work out. It's a bit tricky because that's a, that's a negotiated piece, and we can't unilaterally make decisions around union compensation, so I would have to do some research. When I'm talking about the cost of living adjustments, really what I'm getting at there is this is how we're already calculating your CPI adjustments. It just makes sense to use the same methodology rather than reinvent the wheel. We do not at present have a policy directive that tells us how to apply cost of living increases. This would, this would rectify that.
Follow-up, Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. Yes, just when we're saying like consistency and practicality, I'd like to see that if you can do some research to find out if it can be consistent to all of the town employees, I think that would be very nice. So, thank you very much.
Through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson. Yes, you know, I will put it on my, I will put it on my to-do list to ask other central Alberta municipalities if if they target percentiles for union staff as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Shannard.
Through the chair to Colin. Colin, we're always, when I'm looking through this, we're always considering in the percentiles and average. The one thing that I look at is, we don't have huge vacancy, and when I see the list of towns, so when I compare the cost of living in Edson, let's say, to Sturgeon County or Banff places, so I get where you're coming from, but I look at, we're looking to better what we are, but we don't have huge vacancies. And when I compare what we're paying our employees and what it costs you to live in, live in Edson, I don't believe we need a lot of correction. I do believe that every once in a while, when there's a cost of living increase of one or two percent. But have you factored that in, would be my question, the cost of living in Edson versus to what we're paying presently?
Yes, through the chair to Counselor Shannard. I think there's a two-part piece there, what we're paying and what the cost of living is. When we look at the cost of living, we're generally looking at at an Alberta average. But we're comparing to municipalities that are generally comparable with us in several facets. We compared with the same municipalities that we compared council with to look at, you know, the size of the municipality, you know, these different factors to get that in. We avoided municipalities that were right up against a city or may have had huge disparities in that. So, cost of living should be reasonably reasonably comparable. In terms of our competitiveness, we're at the, well, we were at the forty-second percentile, a forty-two point seven percentile as of two thousand and nineteen, so no doubt, no doubt we've fallen behind since then. I look this, I look at this a little bit like I look at an infrastructure deficit. It it will continue to grow and the disparity will continue to grow if we don't have a plan in place. If we don't have a target and if we're not heading in a certain direction to make sure that that we have the freedom to 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 bridge that gap and ensure that we remain sure sure that we remain somewhat competitive or at least comparable. I'll just reiterate as well that when we came back with this in August, this was, we presented several options to to council, ranging from comparable to competitive, and this is meant to be a reflection of what was discussed then.
Mayor Zahara, then Counselor Byer.
Thank you for your presentation, Colin. I just want to get clarification. The percentile targets by municipality that you have listed there, those aren't the ones that we're necessarily comparing to. Those are the ones, those are municipalities that have actually set their percentages. Is that, is that correct? Or are those the ones that you're actually going to be comparing our salaries to? Because it does not include places like Hinton, Rocky, Treton, which are very similar to us.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mayor Zahara. You are correct. This is just a comparison. This is not necessarily the same municipalities that that we're in alignment with or that we use. The the policy states or the proposed policy, as well as the policy for council remuneration, is that we find eight municipalities. So, that could shift from survey to survey, but generally, we would go with with the same, with the same groups. This was, I, I, I asked the question to as many municipalities as I could just to get a quick snapshot of where people were at.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks through the chair to Mr. McComb. So, I realize that we are behind already as it's twenty twenty-one now, and and that spread is getting further. When we discussed the council remuneration policy, I believe we did that kind of, we tried to decrease the spread of that gap over several years. Is that something that we could attempt to target in this way, or how would that make, how would that look? Like, instead of, if council was to go and choose that fiftieth percentile as a, as a target policy, if we're at forty-two percent, how does that look over a couple of years to get there? Or is this something that we would do in one year? It seems like that would be a bit of a jump in our budget, as well as just to just to make something like that manageable. So, I'm just asking for the process. What would it look like? Or what would your recommendation be?
Thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Byer. Excellent question. I want to be clear that this does not anyway bind you. In fact, we've deliberately carved this policy out in such a way that that it remains absolutely clear that this process is at first primarily budget-driven. Next year, you set the budget, and we, and we as administration do what we can to move closer to that target. So, I don't anticipate, you know, we wouldn't necessarily put it in the policy, certainly not the way we've structured it here, that we're going to bridge this gap this year and that gap next year. Council remains in control of the process because you set the budget, and then administration is tasked with with addressing the problems as they arise. You know, maybe in the first year, we, we can't move everybody a little bit forward. Maybe we need to find some of our biggest disparities and deal with those groups first. But the idea is that slowly but surely we move there. It could take several years to get there. My preference as as not only the HR manager, but the recruiter for this organization, is that we would get there sooner. But this is a budget-driven process, and we need to be realistic and take a long-term outlook to this. It is, it is common, it is consistent for organizations of all kinds, not just municipalities, to have a target because you need that principle to to set your anchor in. Then, then you look at your budget and see how you can approach that target.
Any other comments or questions? Mayor Zahara.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just as I was reviewing these policies, the one that is proposed here is far more condensed than the previous policy. And the new policy doesn't talk about things such as red-circled employees or downgrading or upgrading reclassifications. Is there a reason why that has been left out of the the new policy? I do have, I guess I do have a concern here that while we're talking about overall compensation, we are aware that some are certainly on the lower end, some are on the higher end. So, how do we deal with that? Or is that more of an administrative policy matter?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mayor Zahara. That is, that is traditionally, and in the case of most municipalities, that, well, these are, these are procedural matters. I've, I felt for some time that that embedding these things in the policy was problematic. For one thing, red-circling In the policy was was problematic. For one thing, red circling employees, if you put it in the same policy, if it's not clear. Then then those considerations are not necessarily subordinate to budgetary considerations. So it it, I I think in the in the hierarchical sense, it needs to be clear that. It is better for clarity's sake. That that policy is supreme, clear and distinct from procedure. Which needs to be a bit more nimble, needs to be, needs to be subject to budgetary considerations and all those kinds of things. On our report, I I stated a few reasons. This ensures procedural functions are structurally subordinated to policy considerations and budgetary realities, as I just said. This ensures the roles of council and administration are clear and distinct. This ensures matters may be changed or affected by employment red. Legislation can be addressed by administration as they happen or as they occur. Procedural matters make a direct impact and confidential employee concerns that can't necessarily be discussed at the council table. We. Administration needs to be able to. Make decisions on on things like red circled employees or or all these factors that can't. By definition, be discussed in a public forum. And this is the standard practice in most municipal, most municipal, pardon me, most municipalities. This wasn't the driver. The driver was getting that. Target of that that compensation of philosophy, those targets recognized, but this was as good a time as any to to sort that out.
Follow up, Mayor Zahara.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Colin. And as we discussed. Last year, I think it's important that we start moving in this direction. We have had vacancies, we've had. Applications that for some of these higher level positions that. Doesn't necessarily bring the qualifications you're looking for to the table based on. What we're providing for salary, but I think that. As we move to that more of a comparable, not competitive, but comparable. Along with the other decision that we made on the vacation pilot project, I think puts us in a much better position. I think that we've seen that through our CAO recruitment, that some of that stuff certainly does help. And you know, we're already looking at data that's that's two years old, so. I'm in supportive moving in this direction and supportive of this policy coming forward.
Councillor Byer.
Thanks through the chair to council and Mr McComb. I'm also, this is something that we discussed a few months ago and wanted to drop back. I think that. Especially after going through the CAO recruitment process as well as understanding that we do have some vacancies and. Learning that when we have other locations that maybe have comparable facilities or town sizes. To our vacation pilot project is definitely one thing that can help attract, but people still have to pay their mortgage. And that's what they do through their paycheck. So I I think heading in that direction is is the right thing to do if we want to have qualified people. And attract from a larger talent pool. As well with the mayor's comment on or question, I suppose. And Mr McComb's comment regarding the kind of definitions. I I I I struggle because I really understand and believe that we need to have balances between council and administration. But these definitions in the previous policy. Have come up numerous times over the past three and a half years. And my understanding of those definitions has helped me make decisions. So if they were to be removed from a policy. Or or from this, then I I would want to ensure that there was a way that council could at least have an understanding of. Those definitions. So when we are talking about salaries, then everybody has an equal understanding of what. Red circling is just to understand that it's there and it happens. And then same thing with the supplemental professional qualifications, SPQ. That that we all know what that is and who gets it and why they get it and and. And market adjustments and over ranging and and all of the all the terms in there, I think have really. Have provided council with good information when we go through that budgetary process that we understand. How it works. If it doesn't need to be in the policy, I I think just having. Access to that information in another form would be important, in my opinion.
Through the chair to councillor Byer. Absolutely. They, I have absolutely no concerns with with council having access to that, to those procedural matters, to visibility. I I believe strongly in transparency, both to our staff and to council and. That is not a problem at all. And I I do appreciate that that council desires to. Have a clear understanding of these matters because it does inform your decision making and it and it does help to understand what our realities are when you're setting those budgetary targets. So. Very much in in favor and able to be supportive of that.
Councillor Shannard and then councillor Curry.
Through the chair to Colin, I don't expect you to have the information, but as usual. What would be the financial impact if we were to gradually over one year, two years, three years? Bring people up to the 50th percentile. So if you don't have any information, if you could maybe bring that forward, what the cost would look like?
Through the chair to councillor Shannard, I I could do that. The the exercise would be. Pretty theoretical, simply because this is. And and I believe back in the RFR that that. That we put out back in August, I I ventured some numbers and it was clear back then that they were theoretical back then and. If you would like, I could email council that so you could have that for for your own decision making. It's, again, the the point for me is that. Is that the budget remains the driver for for compensation? And then administration is then tasked with with navigating that. So. If council says this is the budget, the budget's the budget and and there's no increase, then then we just have to have to roll with that and find a way to deal with it, right?
Councillor Curry.
Thank you. Sorry, through the chair. Thank you, Colin, for bringing this back to us. I know we had a lot of conversation about it. And I'm always in support when we've made a decision where we are. Have a goal that it should be in policy. That's how we ensure that it does happen. I do support. I know it makes the policy look a lot smaller and the changes. At first I was really. Same thing. I was going, that's a lot getting taken out. But I do agree that our original policy was very much procedure. And policy is supposed to guide procedure, not be procedure. And so I do think that I like that, but I also agree with. What councillor Byer said, I think it'd be really important just when we are having these conversations, even to attach that information. For us, so we are able to understand the language more. But I do agree with the changes because I do think that that is procedure versus policy. And I like it and thank you for bringing it forth.
Councillor Bevan and then councillor Wilkinson.
Through the chair to Mr McComb there. I do like what you brought forth to us here, and I do understand everything you put in there about the. Red circle and stuff like this. I know we're sitting at 42.7. I think we don't do something, we keep following. Further and further behind, which is not what what we should be doing for our town. I also like, you know, to have some kind of comparison or whatever, not to see all the information. We can't know that. It won't be 100%, but at least we have some kind of a comparison, a comparable or whatever and that. So I think we've got to move forward on this. Whether it takes us a year or two years, I think that's something council's gonna have to sit down and talk about. And how soon do you want to know on this?
Through the chair to councillor Bevan. Thank you. I. The the policy is prepared. I see no reason why if if council is genuinely in agreement with what we have here, why why we can't bring it to the next council meeting for approval.
Right, any other, oh councillor Wilkinson, thanks.
Oh, thanks through the chair. You know, and it says here administration should target the 50th percentile. When I'm going for a goal, I'd sort of at least like to have a little ballpark figure, you know, like councillor Shannard asked, what would it cost to get there? So that I actually am very clear on what the goal itself would cost. So thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair through to councillor Wilkinson is, may I ask, or or to all of council? Would you be satisfied with with the numbers that I presented back in August with me sending you those estimates?
That's fine.
And and would you be satisfied with me sending those to you via email?
Yes, yes, just as long as the goal is clear. Period. Thank you.
Mayor Zahara.
I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that these numbers are theoretical and not something we're necessarily going to do. Once again, that's a budgetary driver, but I think it's, I think it's important to know that information, to know what that gap looks like, and I I certainly appreciate that. And I think it's good information for us to have. I just don't want anybody thinking that, yes, we're gonna be matching that gap over one or even five years. But that'll be decisions down the road.
Okay, I'll take the final comment. I have three comments and then a question for Mr McComb. First comment is I recommend that you do not include this table in the policy. The table of percentile targets by municipality. I don't think it adds anything to the policy and it just. Is it's already a couple of years outdated anyways. Next up. I like many other councillors would want to see the the number before I voted on this. When we discussed remuneration for council or council. We had that number in front of us. We knew what we were getting ourselves into. And as well as the other councillors, I would like to see that procedural document just to make sure that. That the verbiage that we're cutting out of here is in fact going somewhere else into procedure. And and that just for understanding and our comfort level. And then lastly, my question is, do the, is the goal here? For the 50th percentile to be as a. As a organization to reach the 50th or is each? Each. Classification of worker trying to. Each employee's position trying to reach the 50th percentile. Like how how fine tuned are you going to be trying to reach these targets? Thank you.
Thank you councillor. There there are a few. Well, there's a few questions here. I'll try and take them in order. Number one, the the percentile targets by municipality, that that was an information piece and it was never meant to be included in the policy. So. Apologize for the lack of clarity around on that. Actually, I'll go to the last one next, which is about the 50th percentile. I think we want most classifications to generally be as close to the 50th percentile as we can get. But again, that that is a process, right? If we do, we do have the odd classification where where we're a bit above that and and those positions. Shouldn't necessarily. Be as favored as as ones that are below the 50th percentile. You know, there should be a bit of downward pressure or or at least a bit of a lag for anyone who's exceeding that target and and more of a driver for those who are falling behind that target. But we all have, we have to take all of that into consideration. As we go and consider the staff that we have and you know, it. This is another one of the reasons for for putting it into a procedure is we need to make decisions about. About not being too shock and awe with some people and and easing people into it and realizing that if if we made the wrong move here, we could cause turnover concerns, et cetera. The last piece, I, would it would it be helpful to council if I gave you the main piece of of what's going to change in the procedure? With this, I mean, I'll I'll send you what we have is of course, but I'm I'm happy to speak to that here.
From my point of view, yeah, just sending, even in the information package when this comes to council meeting, that would be fine with me. Councillor Byer, you had a comment or question?
Through the church of council, I was able to quickly pull up our meeting from last August and if I am looking at everything correctly, it looks like the proposed. Percentage target at 50%, the cost implication was about $33,000. So. If and and that's for the. Compensation, compensation strategy for management and professional staff. So if that's what, if if that theoretical number is is accurate, if that is that, if that is the ballpark number that we're looking at, then. I think that it's certainly reasonable to. To attempt to meet that goal.
Councillor Wilkinson.
To you and the chair, I think this comes back to your question. We're reaching the 50th percentile for who in our organization, all of us or not? This is only a partial. Part of our organization. So I'd like a readout for everybody.
Councillor Shannard.
Yes, actually, thank you councillor Byer, bringing up the 33,000. I disagreed with it then because I have to agree with councillor Wilkinson. How many employees are you talking about? Because some of them could be 10 or 15,000 behind. So 33,000 doesn't take long to burn up if we're talking 20 or 30 employees. That's very nil. So. I'd like to know more of an accurate number. What would the total, how many employees are involved? 33,000 is not enough money for, you know, that'd only be a few and few employees.
See, I've been here, sorry.
Through to through to council. I think we, you know, we'll definitely be doing that. We're going back and looking at these figures again and bringing them back as as requested by a number of you. To show you what that gap is. We don't know that right now. We'll look, we'll look into that and bring that back to you. I think it's it's not. It's the positions that we're going to be get to the 50th percentile. Is that right, Colin? It's not, it's not the people that we're talking about. It's the positions. In our band. So that's, that's what we have to look at as well as is is looking at the actual bands and getting those to that 50th percentile.
Mr McComb.
Yes, through the chair to council. Yes, we're talking about the classifications. We're talking about the wage grids and and the people fall outside. Some people may fall outside of those grids and people progress through those grids and. As as people higher in the grid leave, new people come in, they generally start lower. It's. You can never find a fixed point in time. This is one of the reasons why it's difficult to give you an exact number and tell you you can take that to the bank because. The numbers will be different even even a few weeks from now than than they are today. If I may just quickly speak to the procedural policy, there's there's one. Big change that that we are pondering that is actually dealt with in this policy with the CPI increases. Formally, what was happening is the grids were fixed. And and when people maxed out, we were giving them CPI increases instead of progressing them in the grid. To the point where we have people progressing year over year over year above their bands. And and no longer in alignment. Further, we have other people who may be. Who may be red circled. Because they're way above their band, maybe they were classified, et cetera. And then you start to see a compression between the people who just exceeded their bands and continue to receive CPI increases. And and the people who were red circled because they were reclassified. At which point, at what point do we consider those people to be in alignment? The the standard practice at at just about anywhere with a broadband system is that you apply the CPI increase to the bands. And then when you hit the top of the band, you hit the top of the band. Now, if the band goes up, you go up in conjunction with the pen and that's your CPI increase. We've even had instances. Particularly when CPI was was higher. Where people, where people's CPI increase actually superseded. What they would have gotten had they just went up an increment in the band. So they actually got more as a result. And the number of red circled or or yellow circled employees is is growing. And and with no turnover, that only continues, that that situation only promises to deteriorate. So I mean, there are many procedural ideas that we're we're pontificating. But really, the whole concept of red circling. Should be a one off. It it should be something that is only pondered in unique circumstances. It shouldn't be a standard policy procedure. But what we are pondering is is a greater ponderance of what we call green circling, which means you've hit the top of your band, but you'll you'll receive an increase if your band does. And if CPI doesn't go up, then then you don't receive an increase. You're at the top of your band.
I would like to comment on that. He raised some very good points, Mr McComb. But if 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 there's a significant proportion of our staff that are red circled. And far above their band, I that's a, that's a concern to me. I understand it might. and far above their band, that's a, that's a concern to me. I understand it might be operational, but it kind of defeats the purpose of, of setting percentiles for ranges if everybody's above the range. I don't know how we get around, how we get around that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's in, in my estimation, the, the way we get around that is we, is we, is we fix the procedure. So that's not longer allowed to happen. And then we start to address the one-offs. We, I, I'm reticent to get into too much detail in this forum because the more detail we get into, the more people we're talking about specifically impacting. And at this point, it's, it's theoretical anyway. We have to deal with these things as they arise. But what needs to happen, if somebody is way above their band, either that means the band is way out of whack or they are way out of whack. And either way, that situation needs to be addressed. From an HR standpoint, the situation is only going to become more untenable as time progresses. And this is the fix. The, the sooner we do this, the sooner we can start addressing that and get to a point where we don't have red circled people. Is we can, we can adjust the procedure so that there's no such thing as red circling. There are more appropriate ways to deal with people who are improperly classified.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, there's, there's a lot more discussion that needs to happen. Counselor Shannard for the last comment.
Hi, Colin. Just to clarify, so if I'm understanding red circle right, that means these people are out of the band. Is the reason they're out of the band is because they've been here a long time? And Mighty, if they've been here a long time, we're having a good problem. That means people are taking these jobs and calling Edson their lifelong home. So if the red circle means they've been here 25 years or 20 years, we're creating a good problem. Because the whole goal was encourage people to move here and make it a lifestyle. So is it the long-term people are making the red circle what we want? So I think we're creating a good problem if I'm correct.
Through the Chair to Counselor Shannard. Red circling, red circling typically happens when an employee is reclassified and an organization makes a decision not to adjust their pay. And so what happens is that person just continues to not receive an increase indefinitely. And that to me is, is not a sound execution of HR principles. What that creates is uncertainty for the individuals involved. It creates frustration for the individuals involved. It's often pondered as a short, short-term solution, but it's a short-term solution with, with negative long-term consequences. The other situation that we have here where people are red circled, they're not really red circled under our policy, but the impact is, is sort of the same. They're, they're kind of, I guess I would say they're yellowed circle, yellow circled in that they're, they've exceeded their bands. They're continuing to receive CPI increases, which could actually be more than be an increase merited by, by a jump in the band. That could be, and then I could, I mean, I, without getting too specific, I would say that happens most often when our bands are mostly out of whack with, with the market reality. It's, it's indicative of that. You don't necessarily have to be a long-term employee to be in that situation. But that creates uncertainty for people. And, and in my estimation and in my experience, the best compensation policy is one where people just know the rules. And that's it. You're going to get what you're going to get next year. Having a situation where you're, you're uncertain about your future, you're uncertain about what your wages might look like is, is, is frustrating. It's a drag on morale and it, it accomplishes the opposite of what compensation should.
Yeah, I think we'll cut it off there. I think administration has lots of comment and has lots to work on before we see this again. So thank you very much, Mr. McComb. And next up, we have digital sign options. I will be recusing myself and handing it over to Mayor Zahara after you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we do have the digital sign options and I believe we have Mr. Beth G. to run us through this. This has been a topic that we have discussed at strategic planning the last few years and take it away, Mr. Beth G.
Yes, Your Worship, this is something that we brought up at Strategic Planning Session a while ago. And we just wanted to bring you some information and get some clarification from you as well. So I'm just going to bring up the presentation here. Let's see if this works for me. I'm usually behind the scenes. All right. Can everybody see that? Okay.
Yeah, you're good to go, Steve.
All right. So one item from our SPS session that we've been looking at is the potential for more digital notification signs in Edson and how that could assist in communication to the public. Research has been done into a number of different options and we're now looking for some feedback from council on how we should proceed, if this is the right time, et cetera. There's a few examples I want to run through about what's out there and what other communities are using. So we'll start with our own. This type of display is what we currently have at Repsol Place and the cost is approximately $64,000. And that's just for the double-sided marquee only. That's not the actual physical sign that it's hung on. Of the options we reviewed, this is the most cost-effective. However, the relatively small in comparison to some others and the quality isn't that great for the types of messaging that we'd be looking at, safer events and stuff. Rocky Mountain House got back to me. Their sign is about 14 years old. It's similar to our Repsol Place marquee, just a little bit older. There's used mostly for municipal information, but they do allow community organizations to use it as well for a fee. They had budgeted for a new one in recent years, but felt the cost wasn't worth the change at this time. Again, the size would be small and the cost is in the neighborhood of about $60,000. Town of Stony Plain in recent years partnered with their Chamber of Commerce to construct this sign at a central location for both town and chamber messaging. So they do share that. It's centrally located and that's something we would find difficult in our town, just the way it's a split highway, the way our town's laid out. It's large in size, good for visibility and has good quality display. The cost for that sign was about $140,000. Grand Cash and Fox Creek both got back to me as well. And they've recently done signs or are doing signs for the rec facilities and the budget was approximately $150,000 for each. So the current signage we have, we have four digital message boards. You'll notice them right now. Two of them parked at each end of town, one on fourth and one on second. We use them generally for short-term messaging, road closures, construction, landfill closures. Recently, these been turned over to me to be able to use for some general messaging as well. These have also been used for messaging about COVID through the pandemic. Right now, we have a message about the provincial mask mandate. We do have two standard billboards that are solely ours to use. Right now, in the East End, it's near the golf course turnoff, currently displays the Hillendale Incentive Program info, which is something that we're going to be leveraging a little bit more this spring as we build up some, some more information on that program. And on the West End, we use the, the billboard as part of our regional billboard program with White Court. We take turns using it. We each have about six months of use and we get to advertise in both White Court and Edson. And it expands our messaging into other communities. Right now, it's been kind of shut down a bit because of COVID, but we're planning on messaging a lot about Wilmore Park in the next couple of months here. So just some discussion points that I want to get from council here. What are we trying to accomplish with the project? Are we doing public notifications? Is it event notifications, advertising revenue? What target are we, are we trying to reach here? Is it the motorists? Is it our, our, our residents? Is this a priority at this time or something we'd like to review down the road? And what locations are we considering for the signage? One of the issues that we could run into are with the strict rules that highways has, even doing our entrance signs was a bit challenging. We actually had same footprint as our old signs, even smaller. And the, the approval process was quite cumbersome. And, and just, I think that's going to be a problem all along the highway. So if we're looking at Centennial Park, that's going to be a highways issue as well. We could put something at the new multiplex, which I think is, is actually a pretty good idea. And maybe it's something we could partner with, with Yellowhead County or the Chamber or somebody else. And what type of signage do we want to consider and what cost are we looking at? So those are just some of the things I wanted to go over with council and I'm going to stop sharing here so we can see you and let you get at it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beth G. I'll open the floor to questions, council. If we have any questions, Counselor Shannard.
Through the Chair to Steve, these 100, like you, you had signs that were 64,000, but you said they were small. Now there are 140,000 for the large signs people can read. That's per sign. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, because like if you're going to put a small one and save money, people can't read it. So what you mentioned is that Centennial Park, they would have an issue putting that. So what I'm thinking, if we put it on the other side, the town-owned land by east of the RCMP where we have land and over towards the skate park where we own land, would that be suitable or is that be as much issue with transportation?
Yeah, through the Chair to Counselor Shannard, it would create the same issues. It doesn't matter which land we have it as long as it's been within a certain distance of a major highway. We're going to have a lot of red tape to go through. Some of the rules that I was reading earlier today regarding, regarding the signage was like you can't have certain colors, you can't have certain fonts. You can't have flashing signs and things that change and advertise certain things aren't allowed along a major highway corridor.
Okay, can I do one quick follow-up? Okay, Steve, since I got my traffic license, something I can lobby to get us some signs and I don't care about color. I love lights. Would that be a good, a good project for me to take on?
Through the Chair to Counselor Shannard, whatever you guys decide, you can lobby your, your heart out.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Wilkinson.
Through the Chair, Steve, thank you very much for your presentation. I really liked that. Clear and concise. I do like the mobile signs you have now. I think that they're really very handy. Even when I drive into town, I look and read it. So I, I'm sure all of our tourists do as they come through. So I think they're very useful, especially they could be used around school zones, et cetera. And as far as I'm concerned, why don't we sort of save our money till we get the new multiplex and get some wonderful sign there? Because there's no sense putting any extra money into the Repsol right now. I can't imagine. Those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, council. Anybody else have any questions? Counselor Curry and then Counselor Bevan.
Yeah, I have to say that I'm falling in the same area as Counselor Wilkinson on this. I really appreciate our mobile ones that we can use and we're allowed to use them on the highway. I think they get the most amount of traction. And I'm, other than our highway corridor, I'm not interested in putting that kind of money into a sign anywhere else in the community at this point. I do think the multi-complex would make a huge difference because I think we're going to get a whole bunch of traffic that way. But right now, to put that much money into a sign outside of our corridor, I just don't think it would have the effect that we need it to. And if it's that much hassle, I do think the ones that are on are currently doing the job.
Counselor Bevan and then Counselor Byer.
Through the Chair, I guess a couple of questions here is the sign we got now that we use a mobile sign, a lot of people like it. Can we get anything that's a little bigger and that, and we can put a little more on? And also, I do like the multiplex sign. And I know back in 2010, 11 and 12, when I sat on one of the boards before as a counselor for the town, a group did come to us and they were going to put up digital sign boards. And they were going to put one just across from the A and W in that empty lot and one on Second Avenue, can't word, can't remember where it was, but I believe the town, we want to do something like that. The town has a bylaw on there that we can't come with any, so many blocks of, I can't even remember now, but I'd have to look it up. But I think, you know, we don't spend a big money like that right now. We wait. I like the idea of partnering with, you know, the county and the chamber and the town where we can all advertise something to make more attractive to come here.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Byer.
Thanks. Through the Chair to Mr. Bestki. I have to agree with some of the comments the council has made. I, I think the, by, I, I think the only reasonable place to have a, a sign of this magnitude is along our highway corridor, if we're going to choose to do that or at the location of the new multiplex. I think anywhere else is definitely not ideal. I, I, I'm a bit hesitant with the cost on, on this. I, I think our current trailers do provide information, although I'll admit they're not as aesthetically pleasing as, you know, maybe some of the other signs that you've shown in the pictures. I think some of those definitely have a wow factor, actually. Some of them look really nice. And I think those can also get the message across. So I, I guess that's maybe a part of the conversation as well that I, I would want to consider is we talk about beautifying Edson and the trailers are very functional and they're very practical and I, I really like that about them. But they're not very beautiful trailers and the signage. So when we talk about beautification and giving a wow popping Edson look, I think that we have to kind of take a look at that as well. I, I don't know what addition, what other items we would put on the signs other than what the, the trailers currently have. And, and the advertising revenue is possibly an option, but if that, if the Alberta Transportation has rules on what kind of colors and fonts, I, I think that's a really, that, that could be really tricky to navigate through that as well. So right now, I'm not in a favor of wanting to put any of those on our corridor and, and maybe talking to the chamber or the county or any of the partners that you mentioned to see if anybody does have an interest in something like this at the new multiplex or, or maybe elsewhere in town. Maybe if we have more traffic going westbound than eastbound, maybe that's just what we look at. If, if we wanted to proceed, maybe we don't have to have one in each direction. Maybe, maybe one direction's okay. So yeah, those are just my thoughts, other than the beautification aspect of it. I'm, I'm okay not proceeding right now.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Beth G. and then Counselor Curry.
Through the Chair to Counselor Byer. I, I absolutely agree. Those trailers are meant for more of the, the construction side of things. And it's maybe something we can look at. Next time we decide to purchase something like that, is we can maybe look at if we can get different colors and we can get different styles, that sort of thing. And actually, just today I got control of those signs and, and trained up on how to use them. So we are going to start seeing more changes to those signs and not just have the one message. We can actually have two or three messages going at the same time and they'll flash over. So the big thing with the rules with highways is, is not distracting the drivers. So that's why they have the additional rules with the lights and that sort of thing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beth G. Counselor Curry.
I was just going to say, you know, if they're depending on the rules, maybe you could partner with the community development team on a beautification of the trailers. It could be painted. They could be made beautiful flower pots. I don't know. Hey, Mr. Ham, don't ruin all my fun.
Hey, we were talking about our burseries here earlier, so there, there could be that possibility. Thank you, everybody, for your commentary. I was actually quite surprised by the cost of this. If we were to move in this direction, it's important that we would do it right. So I'd want to see a nice, high-quality sign. I didn't anticipate that cost and that doesn't include the actual physically, physical structure of them being put on. But I do think that we do need to think about this as a longer-term option. When we're talking about economic development, we talk about things like the bike park and Wilmore Park and the new multiplex in Hillendale. Like a sign such as this can have huge value in economic development, especially with the 18,000 vehicles traveling down the Highway 16 corridor. No doubt, Alberta transportation rules are cumbersome. And so we, if we are looking at doing this long-term, it's important that we start having these discussions now and start looking at what those rules are and how we would be able to, to move forward. But I can't, I can't justify that type of money at this point in time either. But I do think the multiplex would be a good place for a central location for community messaging, where I think on the highway corridor, it's more about driving some of those economic development options and maybe looking at partnering with the chamber and, and advertising local businesses and, and some of the wonderful amenities that we do have here in our region. So I would, I would suggest that maybe we, we have a further discussion, astrat planning about the longer term. If we want to look at something longer term, but in the short term, I can't justify that kind of money until we have a good plan in place. Counselor Wilkinson.
Just to you, through the Chair, when you see what the cost to them are, I hope somehow we can incorporate one of these signs into the multiplex's original money plan to make sure that we get partners on it. Because that would be a huge amount of money just to pay on our own afterwards.
Thank you. Any other further comment? Did you get what you need, Mr. Beth G?
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Sorenson. You can rejoin. All right, thank you, uh Counselor Sorenson, you can rejoin. Counselor Sorenson, are you there?
Having technical problems, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh moving on to amended signing authority policy. CEO Bitner?
Yes, thank you, uh Satya. Um just going through some of our um, as we've gone through a few of our policies, you've seen purchasing policy, for example, just updating some of the actual things we're doing and just re- re- revisiting some of the uh um items that we have in the policy. So you see that we've uh, since we've done the signing authority, there's been a lot more electronic signatures being done because of COVID as well. Um which is good because it's actually made us modernize a lot of our things and we'll be moving forward even when COVID's in the rearview mirror with a a lot of electronic um uh signatures and uh payments, et cetera. So you'll see the amendments we have here, um mentioning the the digital signing. Um the other change is with the the checks and the and the EFTs, I love, we're actually trying to move away from checks entirely. Um as much as we can, the banks are actually encouraging us to do that. Uh it's now the um one of the, well, when we were allowed to go to conferences, one of the last ones I went to, there was talk about how that's actually now the major fraud through the banks is actually people intercepting checks in the mail and uh and amending them. Um so uh we thought we had time to sort of move away from having those signing uh authorities with um uh a a um an administration person and a council person. Um now that we give you the quarterly reports, we show you budgets to actuals, uh which we never used to do in the past. That it was sort of done at at year-end type of thing. Um we thought it was uh sort of prudent now to uh to bring that forward. And of course, any payments that are not provided for within the budget, we've made a provision here that they must be accompanied by the council resolution. So that uh we we know that anything that's over and above the budget that that you may get uh your quarterly reports on uh are differently covered um by council. Um and then the other thing was just a quick uh change on um uh who needs to sign some of the the forms that we have here, we've just reviewed that and updated those. Uh so that was uh just the the amendments we had for the signing authority policy.
Hey, any comments or questions? Counselor Shannard.
Through to interim CEO Bitner, uh just curiously, should we explain to the public electronically, when you send electronic check out, who signs who's responsible? How does that work?
Certainly through the Chair to Counsel Shannard, uh we have um, this is sort of based on the purchasing policy and the procedures within that. Um we obviously have the a a original approval from the manager uh within or within their signing authorities that are in the um purchasing policy. Our um accounts payable clerk will then verify those uh approvals to make sure that people aren't signing above their limit, for example. Um inputs those, then that comes to um Mr. Pacey, our corporate services manager who reviews them, he is one signature. Uh then they come to me, I review them and I am the second signature. So it goes through a quite a number of eyes on the way to before it before it is actually sent to the bank.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Byer.
Thanks, uh through the Chair to uh CEO Bitner. Um I I I'm I'm fine with these changes. Um I appreciate that you're updating what um the general practice has been um to the policy and that uh um and and that we have an understanding of what that looks like. Um I also like it's written in there somewhere that uh if if they go out of their budget, then it has to get approved, I think, by the CAO. Um or council if it's um beyond the budget, I guess. Um unless they can find it within another budget, so um I'm appreciative of that uh as well as um that there are already so many eyes on all of these items before they come. Um I think that's great and I I know when council signing checks, um generally, we don't really have the full details on that, so I I don't, I I'm I'm fine with eliminating that um from us. Uh as as you mentioned, um you have that quarterly financial report that you give that actually provides us with information that we can use, so. Um I'm okay with these changes, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh oh, Counsel Wilkinson.
Sorry. Okay, through the Chair, I see why your changes have to come and I I agree that they do. But um when you're applying for grants and the mayor doesn't have to sign anymore and stuff, I guess the more communication we could have for information for council, I'd appreciate. I know in the old days, it uh administration still was responsible for the budget and it wasn't an operational thing, but more an informational thing when we had to go and sign the checks. I learned so much, like how much it costs to move a power pole from one place to another, that everything you ordered wasn't for a Zamboni, there were different brand names. You did learn a lot of things, so I guess the information part sort of is lacking. So I do appreciate that you have your quarterly report, so we'll have time to ask you there for information as well. So thank you very much, Ms. Bitner.
Thank you.
Mayor Zera.
Uh thank you, uh Mr. Chair. I'm in support of these changes. Uh we've been doing a lot of things digitally, obviously. A lot of the correspondence coming from the mayor's office has been done digitally uh over the last number of months because of the town closures and that sort of thing. Um the uh most grants, uh major grants require uh signature from the mayor. And if they don't, a lot of times we, uh the mayor's office also provides a letter of support, so. Um if we are successful, usually that's communicated to council as a whole. But I think uh what I would like to see and maybe it's uh it's not necessarily a part of this policy is uh grant reporting as well on how much dollars applied for and how successful we are. We're seen as a municipality that's very, very successful on grants. And that's the due to the work of our administrative staff, always keeping an eye out. And I know some other municipalities are looking to us on how we've been so successful, so uh something for administration to keep in mind. Um I don't know if that information is readily available, CEO Bitner, or if that can be brought forward to us uh as a part of the quarterly reports on um what we've applied for and uh what money is coming in from from granting opportunities, because some of it's not necessarily government grants either, it's through other organizations.
Uh through the, through the Chair to me, certainly we can look at adding that to to our quarterly report, uh I'm sure um Mr. Pacey would be able to uh get us that information at that time.
Any other comments or questions? Uh Counselor Bevan.
Through the Chair to Sarah, and I, you know, I do support this too and that. And as like the mayor says, you know, this information we can get to the Counsel Wilkinson is uh to keep us up on it and that. I think that's very important for us to see what's going on, but I uh no long rambling, I do support it.
Thank you.
Uh I will take a stab at this, I am in support of it as well. I've always felt, as a deputy mayor, I always felt uncomfortable signing checks when I didn't understand the, you know, the process, I wasn't sure if the work was done. It was, it's, it's, it's uncomfortable putting your name on something where you don't have much control over. Uh and as far as uh digital signing, um the real estate business has gone almost entirely paperless and digital now, so there's no reason why uh and it's been that way for a few years, actually, so there's no reason why we shouldn't be doing that within town office. Uh Counselor Shannard.
Uh just because it was brought up, actually, that's the part I'll miss, because I um I'm, I come, or I agree with Counsel Wilkinson, when we started signing checks, I really enjoyed that factor. And sometime like you sign a check for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh before I signed it, I went and asked questions. Many times I would want clarification and where I will miss it, it did open my eyes. Because a lot of times like what it costs to run the town, when you sign off the power bill, you're like, wow. So that part I will miss and I did ask lots of questions before I signed my name, so I'm all for the electronic world, I totally agree, it's better, but on the, on the other hand, I will miss signing checks.
Counselor Curry.
Thanks, Chair. I was starting to think you couldn't see my hand. Um uh I am also in support of this, uh CEO Bitner. Um electronic is, yeah, it is the way and I get it. I can imagine that checks are fraud. Um that there's a lot of fraudulent behavior with that. I'm not surprised. Um I also found that signing the checks, um a lot of the time, it was, it just didn't seem as necessary. And um we hire staff for this reason, uh they are responsible for their budget. Um and I think we have to trust them in that, so thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments, thank you very much, uh Ms. Bitner. Next up, we have the SPS project uh progress matrix update.
Right, uh we bring back the uh the matrix even now and then for for council's review and update um the progress on 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 the on the projects that have been listed. Um so you'll see that attached uh to this memo. Uh within the memo, we actually have uh just some some specific questions about some of the um items that are on the matrix, uh as well as just uh a couple of updates on some of the things. So I think these were the items that the staff were um wanting to to point out to council and and make sure that we either kind of get a maybe bit of guidance, um or just update you on what's happening. Uh so firstly with executive office, uh we did have a a council compensation for childcare expenses was marked as a low priority. Um we have prepared and researched an RFR in regard to this item. Uh so wondering whether you would like this um brought forward or would you prefer to hold off on that particular item?
Counselor Bevan.
Yeah, you know, I I was never in for this when we first brought it up and that uh I would like us to hold off or even take it right off our books here, because uh we as council, we get uh paid every month here and that. And there is childcare uh services in town here, like with Corey, you can take him down for a half hour rate, an hour rate uh uh you know, full day rate, half day rate, everything else and that, and we get paid really good to something like this. And that, and I think if we, council passes this for council, then I think we should offer it to all of our employees. Because they all have families out there and that, they all have to either get sitters or somebody else has to come in and do it, so I I don't see why we're held to a a different standard or a higher standard than what our workers are doing and that. I think our workers are more important than than what we are, so uh I'm not in for to bringing this again anymore.
Uh Counselor Curry and then Counselor Byer.
Um I have the opposite opinion of that, the complete opposite. Uh the very big difference between us and employees is that this is not a full-time job. This is a part-time job, most of us have full-time work. Um and we know for a fact that this is one of the limiting factors of why people do not um run for council. And so al- also, there is a difference between, um this is a cost out. So if you're paying for childcare, it is different than everyone else sitting at the table because you're paying to be here versus getting paid um to to be here. So uh I do think it's a big deal and I think it's a subtle big deal and I think it's a big deal about who we get to run. Um and I believe in diverse councils um that allow um everybody to be there and I think this is one of the limiting factors and evidence has showed that. So I'm in full support of moving this forward in a priority. Uh it was brought up, I think, two strategic plans ago. Um and I voiced my same opinion there, that I think it's a priority.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks, uh through the Chair to uh Ms. Bitner and Council. Um I I I think with any item that uh administration has done research that we've asked them for at some level, um I I think that we should bring any information like that forward to discuss. Uh it it's hard to have a discussion on any topic when we don't have the information that administration has prepared and researched for us in front of us, so I'm in favor of bringing that forward. Um I will just note on a personal note that I I did not ask for this to be brought forward. Um and uh and I, the the daycare is not open right now, so they they close at six P M. Um and I do utilize their services during the day for my other job. Um uh but I I I, as with anything else, I I think the discussion needs to happen uh when we have all the information in front of us. So I'm in favor of um any report that we've asked administration to do to bring forward, so we can discuss it with the information. Thanks.
Counselor Shannard.
Um the topic I'm gonna bring up, I believe we should do this, but since we're talking about popping in flowers, uh can we add Main Street flowers? So the only reason bringing it up because it's on here.
Hard, Counselor Shannard, we're just gonna talk about executive office right now, we'll go through the the document.
Oh, nevermind, then hold, hold my question the next one.
Okay, any other comments before I go? Uh Mayor Zera.
Uh thank you, uh Deputy Mayor Sorenson. Um as this has been on the strategic plan, I think that it's important that we have the discussion with the information as well. And the council can decide whether or not they wanna move forward with it. I think it's important to have that discussion. Um I think this is very important uh to encourage uh individuals that have children to run for council, to to have them um have that opportunity. And uh this is becoming uh a more standard approach, I think Fort Saskatchewan just uh passed a similar policy here just recently. Um so I certainly wanna have that discussion, look at it and then council can make the decision whether or not they wanna move forward with it uh based on the information that is provided, so. I I encourage council or encourage administration to bring this forward to a future committee meeting.
I also uh would like to see this uh report, I don't, I don't think it needs to be uh twenty pages long, I just think we need some information before we can really discuss it. Uh I I unfortunately, we've left it to the last minute, nominations are open for council. So if we either need to see it soon or just wait till next term, there's uh so either now while nominations are open, let's deal with it or wait till next year, it would be fine. Um my comment as well as the chamber renos, I've always said that our our chamber needs to be renovated uh for um just logistics reasons and now there's COVID safety reasons to do it as well. So I do think that should be a higher priority. Um unfortunately, everything, I think, executive office is higher priority for me, so um any other comments? Mayor Zera.
Uh are we moving on to the next item on executive office? Do you wanna, uh do you have any other information, uh CEO Bitner?
Uh straight through the council, not really at this time. Um we just know that they were put on hold. Uh if you still have the appetite to proceed, then we can commence assessing those unpacks um for you. Just so I guess you're just wanting a uh a bit of a idea on whether uh we we still wanna go ahead with those.
Mayor Zera.
Uh yeah, so um I think there there definitely is a need there. Uh I'm sure the public won't agree, but uh the um our chamber um is quite small and it's lots of wasted space and it makes it really hard uh when we have large groups of people that wanna come to council, um and it's not very functional, so I think we need to have a look at that. I'm not committing to doing it this year, I I think we have some other priorities, but uh it'd be good to have the information so we can make those decisions or maybe we'll find some funds within our budget that uh um that we can make some of that stuff happen. Um I'm second tired of tripping over the cord by my, by my chair. Um it's, it's really, it's really a tough, it's a tough thing because it's a political thing, because it looks like we're trying to reward ourselves, but that that um chamber is not functional uh the way it is right now, so um uh yeah, so bring it forward.
Counselor Bevan.
Just a question to Sarah here, and that uh seems if we're gonna move all of our community services down to the uh other place and that, what's that area big enough back there to do a council rental back there with all the offices we've got back there and everything else and that? Uh it's just something you can look at and give us a price maybe on that. It is a bigger area, can we make a nice council chamber back there? And turn our old council chambers into a few offices for other people?
Uh through through the Chair to um Council Bevan, I'm sure there's different options that we could, that we could look at for sure um for for this building. Um I don't think anything's opportunistic.
Okay, we'll move on to uh infrastructure and planning. Are there any comments or questions on priorities there? Counselor Shannard.
Okay, now I can ask my question in order. Uh since they brought it up, because I agree all these ones, they should, everyone should be discussed. Uh can we add flowers to Main Street? Because we're saying popping our signs, once they get thrilled, when he goes up to Main Street, I'd like to see them lights. And it's been a high priority, a lot of people have missed these flowers and I would like to see that add. these flowers and I would like to see that added in this year. That's it for my comment.
Counselor Wilkinson.
One of our interviewees suggested that it's good if a town has a theme. I have no ideas for that. I just thought maybe we want to think about that a bit before strategic planning. If we think that we should have one and maybe topics, which I think would also have to be done in conjunction with your community. But I think possibly that's something we need to work on. So it is a place to stop.
Counselor Bevan.
Yeah, just looking at our entrance signs here and that, in the past, we've had flowers out there and shrubs and everything else and they were hard to take care of and look after and that. And it looked more, you know, it just looked terrible out there. We were just to take our ads and signs here and just put grass all the way around it so that you know, the town crews can come in and they can just mow it and that to keep her green and that. I think that would look just as nice and that. And I would rather go with the flowers of downtown on Fourth and Second Avenue like we had because when you go traveling around Alberta, you see the places that have their flowers out. And it's it's inviting to come into the town and take a look to see what's going on. And in the past couple of years, we haven't done that. And the people sure miss that.
Counselor or Mayor Zahara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think when we're talking about making entrance, the entrance sets in public, we weren't talking about the entrance signs. We're talking about coming over the overpass and the big slab of cement that we see there. Along with Pothold Service Road by the SO, which continues to fall apart. And what what can we do in that area to kind of spice things up past around the corner? We do have some medians there. Can we add flowers on those medians? Work with Alberta Transportation? Because really, when you come over that overpass, it leaves much to be desired. As somebody who moved here from another community, I I talk about this and I I sorry if I sound like a broken record, but my first impression when I moved here from Athabasca is coming in over the overpass, seeing a cloud of dust and dirt everywhere and cement everywhere. And I'm like, where am I moving into? Like, I'm coming from a community where you know, there's this beautiful river valley. So it was quite shocking to me. And so what can we do to spice that up? Is there an opportunity to to have flags hanging that showcase the diversity in our community with the various backgrounds that we have? You know, we have a huge German community, a huge Dutch community, people from the Philippines. To 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 do some of those, I hate to say more artistic or more aesthetically pleasing throughout our community along our highway corridor, not just, I think where the entrance sign is, I think that area is beautiful right now. I think the town has done a really good job there. It's coming in over that overpass. And I would agree that flowers along Main Street are highly important. I've missed them. They were removed because one year we had water issues and the last year we had staffing issues. So I certainly hope that if they're not in the budget right now, that they are put in the the final budget. I'll be very upset if that does not happen because I think it it really has taken away from the the beauty of of Main Street the last couple of years. So that's my thought on the economic development portion and the other pieces I look forward to to those reports because I think they're great things that we are working on.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks through the chair to council and administration. Mayor Zahara, I think, kind of hit the nail on the button there with coming over the overpass. And that's kind of, I think, where that discussion was. Although I I think the entrance, the town vets and signs also deserve some 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 maintenance there. But I I I think that the color popping or the trying to get some color popping when you go over the overpass is is important when you do see the concrete and the dirt and and just roadway. You know, I I think flowers are great. They they can be challenging to maintain in some areas. I don't know if there's some shrubbery that or trees, small trees that have color. I know one of my favorite streets to drive in town is West Haven Drive just because in the summertime, there's all the trees with the purple leaves and it looks really nice. I don't know if there's a way to, I'm not a a horticulturist or or anything like that, but I know some some trees have beautiful leaves and that can add color. I don't know where exactly they can go or what property we have to to add them on. If that's something that's that's out there or as the mayor suggested, maybe some flags to show our culture and diversity in our community. You know, those things can certainly add color and, you know, kind of that wow factor as well.
Mr. Ham and then Counselor Curry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to chime in here for a second. So just so we're we're getting some clarification here, we're 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 talking about traffic heading from Edmonton into Edson on the overpass and we're looking for some something that kind of isn't inviting like something perhaps like maybe maybe an art commission or or shrubbery or something like that, something that's going to be an inviting piece on that end. For clarity. I'm seeing some nods. I like it.
I I will chime in. That is exactly what we were talking about. Coming over the overpass was the major concern, I think. From my understanding, most of the land on the east end of town is privately owned. So I think that would be a little bit harder. But definitely, there are a lot of Meridian space on on the on the east end. Yeah, Counselor Curry.
And Mr. Ham, you could work with community development to get the trailers to match the colors, whatever it is you choose for shrubbery, trees or flowers or flags. And it would all tie together like a theme like Counselor Wilkinson.
I'll make sure the theme is safety orange just for you, Counselor Curry.
Counselor Bevan.
Through the chair. Yeah, a lot of comments I get and questions is in that by the Lions Park there, they still have the three totem poles there. A lot of people still remember those when they were all painted up and everything else and that. And when you came over the overpass and the bright colors and everything else, you notice that for sure and that, eh? And I think you know that's something maybe we should look at that or maybe the Lions can look at redoing it because it does add to the town. And the other day, I was having coffee in the parking lot. There were some kids out there and they were looking at them too. And they said the same thing, you know. Why can't we paint the totem poles and make them look nice again? My parents said they really made a pop when they came in the town way back when. So I mean, it's just a small thing, but it it makes it look nice, too.
I will come, oh, Mayor Zahara.
I think one of the other comments to consider for administration, too, is focus on making sure that area, you know, signs or if they're down that they're taking care of. I know we have some challenges with Alberta infrastructure on any of this stuff. So I certainly understand that there we're we're going to have limits on what we can do, maybe engaging with those property owners through the grant program or or maybe they have some ideas on on things that they would like to do that maybe we can assist with. I know there's that vacant pie shaped lot that trucks have been parking on the last two months and there's mud and dirt everywhere. So what we can do to address that with that property owner and and clean that up, I think, are things that we need to to keep an eye on. And I think there's some opportunity there. It just may take some time.
I'd like to chime in. Specifically, the the bullet on commercial revitalization of Third Ave. I I see some items there striked out because administration spoke with Alberta Transportation. And I am unwilling to strike those things out. Those are important to me and I will go to bat with Alberta Transportation if necessary. So I would like to have a further discussion on those items before they're just crossed off and forgotten about. I would, however, I do believe we're land use bylaw is a higher priority for me than that. So I wouldn't mind moving that item down to medium and moving the land use bylaw up to high priority. But that's my comments on infrastructure and planning. Anyone else? Mayor Zahara.
Yes, through to Mr. Ham, I guess. Can you explain to me the reasoning with Alberta Transportation saying no go on Third Avenue? I guess I have a, I'm I'm really starting to have a problem with Alberta Transportation telling us what we can do on our streets or not on our streets. They they don't let us tell us what they can do on their highways. So how can they tell us what we can do on our streets? If we want to change the stop signs, we'll change the stop signs. And the the Transportation Minister can come and tell us that that's not possible. So I get really frustrated with that. I do know for council's awareness that AUMA, based on a resolution here two years ago about developments along the highway, have entered into a pilot project with Alberta Transportation where AT will actually allow municipality to make all the decisions along the highway. And I know administration's talking with AUMA to see if that's something that we can partner with as well as a part of that pilot program. But I guess I just looking for clarity from you, Mr. Ham, on on the reasoning from Alberta Transportation on that. I just have a really big problem with them continually continually stopping development and not allowing us to do what we need to do as a community to to grow our commercial base based on policies from the team.
Mr. Ham.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I I appreciate the feedback, Mr. Mayor. Quite honestly, we did reach out to both our internal bylaw system and and Alberta Transportation. There were there were some concerns with traffic flow at that point. I was hopefully going to table something that would more look more like a roundabout for Third Avenue and create some flow that way and 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 maybe some angle parking on on 50th Street. But we can, I can either bring that as a as a committee item and have a discussion or we can bring it to SPS. It's it's up to you.
I'd I'd be in favor of us talking a bit more about at SPS, SPS and get into further details and discussion on.
Counselor Wilkinson.
To the chair, I totally agree with you. And I think we need to go as a council and lobby the Transportation Minister and have third opened as we have talked about, I think, for two or three strategic plannings.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks through the chair to council and administration. I have two comments on infrastructure and planning. One of them is developing a stormwater management plan. Is that is the the plan? It says this can be late stages of pro project. Would we expect that plan to be ready for us before our strategic planning session in May? That's the first question. And the next one is regarding the downtown and the kind of third of stop conversation. I know our previous general manager of infrastructure and planning had kind of a preliminary report about how we want to look at downtown if we're looking for a short term, medium or long term solution. And if I remember correctly, we were looking for a medium term solution. Do we have anything and any progress on on that type of project as well that would be ready before a strategic planning session? Or for proceed or for our strategic planning session?
Ms. Bitner.
I'll take that one. Um, I think when COVID hit, that didn't really come back to us to be to 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 sort of look at where we were with that. We can certainly pick that up again. The stormwater management plan, Mitch, can you help us as to where that is? I I didn't realize it was near completion. If you can just clarify on that.
Yeah. So the stormwater management plan and the stormwater master plan, I think you're confusing the two. So stormwater management plan is is more of a comprehensive plan of how we're going to approach our stormwater concerns in the community. We can table that at our next committee meeting. I think there, I think this is something that will circle and and then work through over the period of of 2021 here. But with the stormwater master plan that's in our capital program for the next few years here, that will be something that comes in in about 2024.
Thank you. That's where I got confused on those two.
Okay, Mayor Zahara.
Through to Mr. Ham. So as a part of that stormwater management plan, I know when we have that discussion, we had a lot of catch bases that are problematic. Do you have any, can you give council any indication about that situation? And we're having some issues in Hillendale and also with, I know we have some fire hydrants that are not operational right now. Can you give us a high level overview of what that looks like and and some of the challenges you're facing in infrastructure and planning?
Yeah, through the chair to the mayor. I mean, from a from a challenges standpoint, we're not short of them. We're trying to work our stormwater management plan to create a three tiered system in terms of costs so that council can have a better understanding of of where costs lie as opposed to trying to identify a larger sum of money that's going to be invested in the stormwater plan. But at the end of the day, we we have some stormwater challenges and we have some infiltration challenges that we that we intend to address this year. And and one of those major infiltration challenges will will also be ta- tabled very shortly as well.
Counselor Shannard.
Hi, yes, I'm just going to chime in on Third Avenue. I'm agreeing with everyone and I agree with the mayor's comment. We should move forward with it and let's battle transportation because we have no say on second and fourth. They should have no say on third. So I believe that's go to high priority. It was a priority for all of us. So let's move forward on Third Avenue.
Sure, Ham.
I I I regretfully disagree. We're we're not challenged by Alberta Transportation. We're challenged by a safety concerns that Alberta Transportation is tabled alongside with our our in our own internal bylaw. So I I do, I do agree that we should be trying to create some free flowing space on Third Avenue. I'm just thinking that we may be able to attack this challenge from a different perspective with perhaps a roundabout or something of that nature.
Okay, let's move on to corporate services. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to community and protective services. Any comments or questions for Mr. Schramm? Counselor Byer.
Thanks through the chair to Mr. Schramm. I believe we had a the regarding the landscape greenspace in town brought to us once. Is there anything that's going to be brought to us before the summer, spring mowing season starts?
Through the chair to Counselor Byer. Last year, we started a little bit of a pilot project to kind of come up with a plan to reduce areas of our grass cutting and our green spaces. Last year, we had some challenges with COVID and some staffing. We want to readdress that pilot project for 2021. We have a new manager in place and a new supervisor in place to really want to take that project for 2021 and get a true evaluation. So that's kind of our goal for 2021 moving forward is to really put the principles of that pilot project in place for 2021 and then see what we can come up with. And we'll bring some more information back at the end of that that year. So.
Counselor Curry.
As far as the notice motion regarding the local transportation study, I would like to see that brought up higher in our matrix, please.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks through the chair to administration, to Mr. Schramm. I also agree with Counselor Curry. I I think since that notice motion regarding the taxi by law has set forth, I think the the community has changed, I think, since our last strategic planning session and that need has increased significantly. So I'm in favor of continuing that momentum. Thanks.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Through the chair to our CIO. I just wonder, how do we go about changing ratings? You know, I I thought that we had agreement on these at one time and we were going to work through them and then they could change. How many of the low ones have we done studies on? And I guess my next question would be why? If they were low from the majority of the people.
Through through to Counselor Wilkinson. Sometimes the the low ones are fairly a fairly simple project, so we can get them done quite quickly. And that's why maybe some of those low ones are done before some of the medium or high ones, which tend to be more robust and need more. So that that's an, there could be given me a reason why some of the low ones have been completed and some of the high ones may not.
Okay, yeah. Sorry, I'm just sort of a high to low person. So I just wondered. Okay, thanks.
Mayor Zahara.
Thank you and thank you, Mr. Schramm. We have a lot on the list for community and protective services. I do, I I do appreciate the work that's being done into the neighborhood parks plan and the and the green spaces. Just a poor point of clarification, though, with the neighborhood parks plan, which is something that I was really pushing for, looking at some of those smaller spaces in our residential neighborhoods that are underutilized and and looking at ways on how we can make those more year round. So I certainly would like to see that continually. So I certainly would like to see that continually being worked on because I think there's opportunity there. And I do appreciate the application to that grant as well. I think too, I think the transportation strategy can be bumped up probably from the low area. I think that I I do agree that I think the community has changed since our last SPS as well. And then continually working on the campground investment plan, I think those are all really important. On the Vision Park, are we going to be able to do anything with the diamonds this year, do you believe? I know you're on, you have ongoing discussions with Vision Park or with Trans Mountain Pipelines on that. I think it'd be really unfortunate if we can't get some of those diamonds repaired this year for use for next year. Do you have any update on that?
Just to bring you up to speed on that, again, we are still in some talks with Trans Mountain on the funding side of those diamonds. We still have some concerns about potential settlement. We're having some discussions with the pipeline contractors on that. However, that shouldn't slow us down for some of the development that happens out there. Again, development of those diamonds to replace those and move forward with our that phase is really dependent on the funding. And that's what we're kind of holding up. We do have, we're out there earlier this week, there are 12 diamonds that will be accessible to minor ball and adult slow pitch. If COVID restrictions allows that to move forward this summer, which we're hoping they will. But our teams will be out there addressing those 12 diamonds to make sure regardless of the restrictions that they're brought up to to spec that's going to be good and usable should those restrictions go off. Plus, they need to be maintained. We just can't let them sit. Infields need to be maintained. The grass needs to be cut. So we're already working on some strategies in that and we're also working on some strategies to address some of the drainage issues that were identified by the consultants. So that's where we're at.
Hello, Ms. Mayor Zahara.
Yeah, just on on Vision Park and the the plan that was brought forward. I know it was a draft plan. It has not received formal council approval. So is the plan to to bring that plan forward here in the next little while to get official endorsement from council on moving forward with.
Yeah, we're very close to finalizing that plan. There are a couple of things that we're still trying to flush out with the consultant on some of his design. But very close to finishing. A lot of the drains things are good. Well done. Just a few little concepts that we want to finalize and we'll bring that to council for for final approval.
Thank you, Alan. Go Flames.
All right, I will comment. Like other councillors, I believe, are the public transportation strategy needs to be bumped up at least to medium. I believe that is a safety concern, especially especially this year. And I know I won't have support from Councillor Wilkinson, but I do believe bumping campground investment plan down to low would be appropriate for this year. We just don't have the we just don't have the travelers to that, so I could wait till next year. Councillor Wilkinson.
If I could just reply to that, last year we had more travelers than we've had in the other year. And the Lions have been discussing this and they would like to at least partner with the town. It is the town's campground. But at the way it is right now, the camps are too small for current day holiday trailers. So there's many, many people that get turned away from it. And if we're trying to build Etsin, I think it has to be a priority. So I will disagree with you.
Mayor Zahara.
Through the Chair, I completely disagree with the Chair on the campground issue. I think if anything, we're going to see more usage with the bike park and and people not being able to travel down south and stuff. So I think that 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 needs to continue to work on and I think something that needs to be addressed in the next.
Councillor Shinnard.
Well, since you got two no's, you now have three no's. I totally disagree. Last year camping was up, RV sales were up 300%, so we should move it up to high priority.
Councillor Bevan.
Yeah, just on the Third Avenue here and that we're moving it up. Are we going to put a stop to having the big trucks parking up and down that Third Avenue? Because if you go down there right now, there's both sides of the avenue there. There's big trucks on both sides and you can only get one vehicle down there. So unless we're going to be able to say, you know, no parking there for those trucks or whatever and that, we're going to run into a problem there for sure and that. And I think we have to do something like that because there you go down there any time of the day, they're stacked up like you wouldn't believe. I also agree on the parks and that that we have to do something with them also.
I will comment as well. Our downtown area is congested with trucks, commercial trucks. And it doesn't help with beautifying our downtown area. We've talked before about having a dangerous good parking lot on the outside of town and I think that would be appropriate. And we, we, it's just making it a priority. Any other comments? All right, we'll move on. Oh, we are done this area unless someone has a comment. Okay, oh, Mayor Zahara.
I just want to make sure Administration has what they need. CEO, did you get enough information or you confused as mud?
I believe so. I'll just may ask Ms. Parsons if she has enough to prepare us for that SPS session.
I think I feel good about it right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councillor Curry.
Just to throw a little more at you there, Mr. Hamm through the Chair. I think just when you're bringing forth those ideas about Third Ave and the roundabout, I think within that element, I would like to discuss what we would be discussing about possibly moving the trucks off of our downtown core and getting them to somewhere else because I do think that that all comes together. If we're trying to make that a free flow and that's the way we're trying to organize the town, I think that that is linked directly to how do we move those trucks out of our downtown core. So just for you and preparing for strategic planning.
Couldn't agree more. Mayor Zahara then, oh, sorry, Mr. Hamm, did you have a comment?
Yeah, if you just, just remember council that that there are businesses that rely on on some of the that traffic to to work on Third Avenue. So we will, we will pursue that, but there's, there are like mechanical businesses that exist on Third Avenue.
Councillor Robertson.
Mayor Zahara and then Councillor Wilkinson.
Just for Mr. Hamm's knowledge, because he was not at previous SPS sessions when we're talking about Third Avenue in the downtown, we've also had a discussion about pedestrian traffic and linking sidewalks because there's some areas that do not have sidewalks to cross the highway. And I know we're asking you for for a lot right now, but also maybe identifying those locations where we don't have sidewalks to cross the highway so we can have that more global discussion on making downtown more pedestrian friendly and and trying to to make things easier all around. I agree that there is some areas of Third Avenue that are congested with large trucks during the day. I'm not so so concerned that them parked overnight, but during the day, it does become a little bit of a dangerous situation. So something that we should have a discussion about.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Through the Chair, the issue of the trucks, it's easy to say, let's get rid of them. It's just like New York shoving the homeless someplace else. I guess it's a question of someplace else. Those truckers also need to have a place to park. And I think at one time, did we not discuss buying a town lot or something in town and having a parking lot for them? So like it is nice to have it on the outskirts, but how do they get into town afterwards to sleep if they're planning to use our facilities or eat? But I think we have to address the truckers' needs as well somehow. So just another thing, Mr. Hamm. Thank you.
I'll comment on that. They park on the outside of town and they get into town with a functioning public transportation.
I'm just wondering if I if I may suggest we sort of table this until we get to SPS. We're getting into the the big discussions on it and might be a good idea to to move on and just let's save that for our strategic planning session.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. Okay, I think you have enough. We'll move on to Corporate Services and COVID Relief Measures.
Through to the to Council. We're asked to bring forward some the relief strategies that we could look at for for 2021 for COVID. In the memo, you can see that we've, the suggestions we got from the last discussion, the the most supported would delay the tax deadline and suspend the penalties on utilities as we did last year. Both both of these can be done within 2021. We would just need to have a a temporary amendment to the tax bylaw to change that date. And well as a resolution from council for the for the utilities. So they are two that 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 we could easily do in 2021. If you see, we also looked at the one time utility credit, which didn't have full support, but we thought we would just bring forward some of the some of the costs and 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 varying with varying amounts that that would happen. With last year, we did the bill credit on only the residential bills because we had done the tax relief mostly for the non-residential. So in this table, we've included both residential and non-residential for a for a possible utility credit. So we just put this in there for your information. It didn't get, as I said, didn't get full support when we first discussed it. But there was some interest in what that would actually cost if we were to do varying amounts. So within that table and in the memo, you can see those costs. So we're just bringing this forward now to for for your discussion at committee. And then whichever items you wish us to move forward with, we can then bring them back.
I will start off just a thought in support of our recycling society and our our recycling efforts in town. Perhaps instead of a $50 credit, we could do three months of no recycling fee or something like that, a summer of recycling just to promote our recycling efforts as well as to tie the credit to a specific cause. Councillor Curry.
As I had said before, I'm in full support of the delay in the tax deadline and the suspend utility penalties. I think they're a really great way to help people that are struggling without putting them too far behind. But this time I'm not in support of the one time utility bill credit. I still do have concerns. When we made our budget this year, we are using some grant funding within our operating budget, which is not what we usually do and goes outside of how we usually function. And so I I know that we have that COVID relief, but I also know we have a long time to go with our COVID relief. And I do have concerns about we made some budget decisions where we were spreading out the time in which we would be taking that out of our operating budget, which made me uncomfortable. And so I really do feel that our COVID relief needs to be there for the years to come because I think we still do have some big things to come yet.
Councillor Byer.
Thanks through the Chair to Council. I also agree with Councillor Curry. We made some decisions that we were intending or perhaps planning on in in future years to be having to utilize some of the COVID reserve to get us back up to our our regular funds. And I I I would be nervous to to start spending that when when we've seen those charts. Then future councils will have to somehow make up for that. That's a pretty challenging predicament to be in if it's spent. But I am in favor of the delaying the tax deadline as well as suspending utility penalties as as listed. Thanks.
Councillor Shinnard.
Not going to like my comment, but I still stand the same. I agree with delay and stuff, but looking at the numbers where we're saying the hundred dollars to me, I see 3% tax increase, 2.2% and 1.1%. So if we're going to do anything, I would one time a year go zero tax increase, hold spending. It's my comment.
I will comment that I am in full support of the two initiatives to delay tax deadline and suspend penalties as well. Any other, Mayor Zahara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am also in support of delaying the tax deadline and suspending utility, suspend utility penalties. The problem with 0% tax increases are structural in nature, which means that they compound over the years. That's why a utility credit is a far better way of dealing with some type of relief because you're not building that into your budget. I'm of the opinion that we have reserves. They need to be utilized when necessary. We have a large energy reserve with no projects currently allocated as far as I'm aware. We also have the COVID relief reserve and we are in COVID and people are still struggling. We were generous last year with the $100 utility credit. You know, I would like us to continue to do something, maybe not to that amount. I would be supportive of a $50 utility credit, which would help offset some of the increases this year and and give some relief and additional money to Etsinites to spend in our local economy. And I think it would be great if we could do it for both residential and non-residential. I think we're we have 675,000 in our recovery reserve. It is very true. We don't know what's coming, but we do have funds available there. So and people are struggling here and now. And I think it's a good way to show that we are, we are trying to help out our community as best as possible. If council's not interested in that, I I still bring up something I brought up last year is not charging for business license fees this year as a way just to say, hey, we're we're trying to help out our local business community. There are some businesses, obviously, that have been impacted worse than others. So I'm supportive of all those things as a way to help out, but if council is only supportive of suspending utility penalties and delaying the tax deadline, I'll be more than happy with that as well.
Ms. Bitner.
Just for some clarification on the the reserves that we have to help us with COVID. We received a grant last year from the province for most. I've forgotten what it stands for, but there's a municipal grant that we got from the province. That is the one that we are using over the next five years to subsidize our tax increases to get them back to normal. This year, we're using 340,000 of that grant. But we have got that grant set aside to help us getting those with those tax subsidies until we get back to normal and we've got that on a five year plan. The COVID recovery reserve is is a separate one and as in the States, it has about 650 odd thousand in there. That would be the one that we would use for any of the utility credits or those that those types of things. We wouldn't add it to the taxes if we were to give those rebates. That's what I just clarified, those those two sort of separate amounts of money that we have to help us with.
Mayor Zahara and then Councillor Curry.
And just for the clarification, CEO, how much is in our energy reserve and do we have any projects allocated to that reserve? I guess what I'm getting at here is I I don't like municipalities sitting on a whole bunch of money that is taxpayer money with no plan on using it. So if we can make that money useful, that'd be good. Otherwise, we should be looking at helping out our taxpayers as best.
Through through the Chair to Mayor Zahara. The energy reserve, I I'm not sure exactly how much it has in it at the moment. I don't have it up, the exact number up here. We do have at the moment, the we have the grant for our municipal energy manager who is looking into our energy and and types of projects that may come forward. So that reserve may come into use for some of those projects that that he may identify. So at this time, I would, I would suggest that we would, if if we are going to use anything for a rebate, for example, that we we use that COVID reserve and save that energy one for some of those projects that may come forward. We're not quite sure what they might be yet.
Councillor Curry. Counselor Curry.
Through the chair to CEO Bitner, do you know how much money it would be roughly if we were to suspend business license? Fees?
Through the chair to Counselor Curry, the the issue with business licenses is they've already been billed and paid for this year. We bill them at the beginning of January, and they are due by the end of February. So we actually have those already billed. So that would, that would be difficult to not to do those, because we've actually already done them for for this particular year. And just as an aside, I did a quick calculation for Counselor Sorensen's, sorry, Deputy Mayor Sorensen's idea for the recycling for three months. That would be a cost of around $100,000 to do like a three months free recycling.
Counselor Bevan.
Thank you through the chair. I would also be in favor of the tax deadline and the penalties. And last time we discussed this, the $50 was brought up for the residential net. And I would also support that unless there's a council agrees, there's a better way we can do it.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks through the deputy mayor to council. Thank you for the clarification on that, Ms. Bitner, regarding the most grant that's being used to subsidize our, the tax increases over the next several years. I, I I do agree with the mayor that if we have some reserves and we don't have a complete intention for them, that we should utilize them to to a certain extent, of course. I I would be in favor of a $50 either on the utility bills of tax, I'm sorry, a one-time credit or something different to kind of maybe draw some awareness to it, what Deputy Mayor Sorensen mentioned regarding the the recycling charges on the bill as well. If if that could kind of, you know, just draw some attention to the recycling in our community. And and then as Mayor Zahara has mentioned in the past, any savings that people would have to, on on that, if they can afford it, to spend that money locally. Thanks.
Mayor Zahara, I think you had your hand up, and then Counselor Curry.
Yeah, so I know that not everybody is going to be in agreement with the utility credit if there would be agreement on business license fees, I guess, to just be a little bit rid of administrative burden is to refund those that have already paid. I don't know what that would look like and how many accounts that would be. It might get a little, little messy. I just, I just think we should be doing something monetary to assist businesses and residents. Not necessarily it's going to make a huge difference necessarily to everyone, but for those that are struggling, it could be whether or not they buy groceries that week. And it's to show that we are with them and that we are trying to do something. You know, we have 675,000 recovery reserve still. We draw that down another 150,000. We still have a sizable amount of money there to do things with if we want to in the future. I just, you know, we we made these, this reserve for for a reason, and then all of a sudden, most came up, which is great. We are doing stuff on the tax side, but I don't think that's necessarily going to be recognized by our taxpayers. So that's just my thoughts, but wherever council lands, I'll be in support.
Counselor Curry.
I could be swayed for 150, 150,000. Um, I would, like, we already did the utility thing. So I don't know. I think I would like to see more purpose behind it, how we're helping, like, yeah. Yeah. So I like the idea of the recycling or something, but I could support 150 out of the recovery. My thing with with the most was is that I just know that our percentage of increases to getting back is large, and we could decrease that by also pulling from this fund when we're slowly fading in. But I could be swayed for the 150.
Just a thought, if there isn't, I hear some support for my recycling idea, but maybe if that's not a fully supported, maybe we could just waive landfill fees for a month or something to encourage people to clean their yards up. I don't know what. Mayor Zahara.
I like the idea. I just, we, we have a regional partner that also is paying into to that. So it makes things more complicated when we're, we're talking about joint use facilities or things like, say, Repsol Place. So and then then you're kind of not, not everybody's going to benefit from that. So that's why I think the resident, the utility credit is far more wide-ranging. Or maybe we, we talk about doing something different through Etsin Bucks or something where we purchase Etsin Bucks. And I don't know how you would disperse that, though, to to support our businesses. So I think the simple and the easy way is the utility credit. I think it worked well last time. I certainly don't want to spend all the money that we have in reserve, but I would like to do something. So I'll land on the $50 if if council would agree with that. And I think it'd be simple and easy. And let's see, a little bit, we have some, I came up with some ideas here as we're having this discussion.
Through, through the chair. No, I haven't come up with anything else. Also, with the utility credit of the $50, that is that the amount of a business license. So in a way, they are, it would be the same as not doing their business license this year in a roundabout way. But we can definitely do that, do the 150 and and fund that from that COVID reserve if that's the majority of of councils will.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Through the chair, I support the first two and the $50 utility. But we have to realize that doesn't reach everybody either. No apartment dwellers get anything back on that. So it's hard to pick anything. And it's just too bad we didn't get the business license, because those are the people who really need to still be here to make a town when we're finished all this.
As a business owner, it would have been nice, but I agree, it wouldn't reach all the people that don't own businesses.
Nothing does.
No, the only thing really is the utility credit or recycling.
So I think probably best to go around the table here for clarity for admin. So I'm yes to the first two and a $50 utility credit for both residential and non-residential coming from the recovery reserve.
Okay, Counselor Wilkinson, next.
I just thought Kevin was asking for a show of hands if we agree. I just agree with that. Yes.
Counselor Curry. Counselor Bevan. Counselor Byer. Okay, I am in support as well. Oh, forgot, Counselor Schneid, sorry.
I'm in support of the first two, and you know my third.
Okay, I think we have an agreement there. We don't have any information items, no sundry items. Do we have any questions from media and public?
We have one member of the media in attendance, but I don't see your hand up.
She just commented, no questions at this time.
Gotcha.
All right. We'll move on to adjournment. Counselor Schneid makes that motion. It's not debatable. All in favor? Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.
Have a good night, everyone.